Une égalité.
That's okay, I don't need to start over doing it.
So anyways, we had a $30,000 match we had to come up with and we went to the county and said, you know, could you help us in matching this because we're doing it on your behalf? And they said, sure, but why don't we involve municipalities? And what we did was calculated from the initial ARPA funding, what would be an even share if you added what the counties were getting from ARPA and the individual municipalities? And basically, we came up with a 0.61% of that initial ARPA fund would equal to 30 grand. Most of that is the county, about 20,000. And what we're doing is seeking from the municipalities and the county, the other $10,000. And it's based on what their ARPA funding amounts are. So, for example, Dover-Foxcroft being the largest community getting the most ARPA funding is kicking in $2,600. And then, I guess what we're requesting for months is $421.96. And actually, some of the little plantations are, I think one of them is $27 and something. It's not really so much the amount of money that's important, but the commitment that are chosen municipalities to moving forward on broadband. And this is really just the first step to securing much larger infrastructure funding. And so, this is really an important thing and we're hoping to get every single one of the communities in the county on board. No one has said no yet. We've gotten some checks, other people were delaying. But we also have been going around to town council meetings like this to try to explain things, you know, what we're doing and why. To help us on this. And so, that said, I know nothing about broadband. But I do have our consultants, Brian Lippold from Castle Beta Advisors. And he's, I think, on the Zoom call. And we'd be happy to interrogate any questions anything to him with broadband with Brian.
Well, thanks. Do, I have some questions, but do the review. So, I forget when it was, maybe six or eight years or something like that, there was that first, the first assessment, countywide assessment.
Was that the Actum I?
I think so, yeah. And there were, you know, there's sections that assessed the situation in each town, I believe. But it didn't seem to have gone anywhere from there. I guess I'm wondering what action has been taken in between.
Yeah, I think that I'm gonna let Brian answer most of that. But I would say that both because of Glenn, the thoroughness of that study, as you said there, it may not have really fit the bill for what was going to be needed. And as you well know, right now, we're a period where there's a large amount of federal and state infrastructure funding coming down the pipeline. A lot of it targeted at broadband. And so, this really is an opportunity to move. I mean, you can do an inventory, but if there isn't the funding to do the follow-up work, then it's not gonna go anywhere. So, hopefully, it's different this time, but Brian's the expert. I don't know if you can pipe them in.
Good evening, everyone. So, maybe I can fill in some gaps here. And I don't know if, do I have the ability to share my screen?
We don't have a screen that everyone can see. We're just on a laptop right now, so I'm the only person that can see you.
All right, all right, very, very good. So, the, the study that was done previously was related to more of a wireless broadband. And that technology is obsolete now. And because of that reason, the deployment never really went anywhere. Piscataquis County is actually doing pretty well in comparison to many counties because you have Premium Choice Broadband providing service fiber to the home service to a number of areas. But there's a lot of areas of the county that don't enjoy that type of infrastructure. So, what we're doing is a study to identify exactly where all of the broadband infrastructure is, whether it's provided by the local telephone company or cable companies or companies like Premium Choice Broadband. So, what we're doing is going, the process starts with 911 data where we plot that in a GIS system. And then, we search for additional locations that could be subscribers to broadband and add those in if they don't have a 911 address. And what we find is typically around 20% of the locations don't have a 911 address. So, we, we identify those, plot those within the GIS. And then, we have actually already driven all of the roadways and long driveways to verify the type of infrastructure that's available, primarily so that we can identify the gap areas where there is no high-speed broadband. So, we map all of that, create a database that we can then extract to determine what would the cost be to deploy high-speed broadband, to deploy fiber optics, to fill in all of those gaps so that everyone in the county can have access to good service. We've done that in Franklin County, the entire county, the entire county of Somerset. Excuse me. And now, we're working. We're working on Piscataquis. And all of this data that we're creating will then be shared with all of the service providers in the state of Maine to see who is willing to come in and extend network to all of those unserved areas. We're about halfway through the project. Once it's completed, then all of this data is suitable and required for applying for the Federal American Recovery Plan Act dollars, the ConnectMaine Broadband Fund dollars, and what we're anticipating to be the Infrastructure Act dollars coming in from the federal government. Ultimately, the goal is to extend service everywhere. And this data will be used to negotiate with service providers to fill in those gaps. So, we've, we've successfully done that in many other areas. There's a lot of projects around the state of Maine that are ongoing to build fiber. A recent project in Big Moose Township and Moosehead Junction with Premium Choice Broadband, Harfords Point in the Wilson Lake area of Greenville as a result of this kind of study. But we're doing this on a countywide basis now to make sure that everyone can enjoy those same benefits. So, the study will be complete here in the next 60 days, which will position us for the next grant round that the state will be conducting through the ConnectMaine Authority so that you can compete effectively for those dollars. The new Maine Connectivity Authority has $125 million to disperse through a competitive grant program. And then, again, the Infrastructure Act will add additional dollars. So, this positions the county and each individual town within the county to compete effectively for those funds to deploy broadband. So, that's a summary of the project.
Great, thanks for the summary. You probably know, and maybe John as well, that we got, yeah, we have the good fortune of having had Premium Choice already starting to land structure in town. And they've been a great partner. You know, there have been several occasions where we've just had direct communications and hey, we're interested in expanding to this neighborhood or that neighborhood and getting people on board with expressing their interest to subscribe. And so, earlier this year, we're awarded a grant as part of that first round of ConnectMaine to finish wiring up all the streets in town, which will be, of course, a huge boon and something for us to be excited about. As one of the, one of the only towns that probably, well, certainly probably the most rural town to have, you know, 100% of the roadways have, have high-speed internet access. One of the things on my mind is for the new broadband authority that's been established, you know, the previous one had, of course, a very kind of limited scope and even more limited budget. I'm curious at your two cents on how you, how you see that this new authority will speed up the process of access around the state.
Yeah, so, just in full disclosure, I wrote the grant application for Premium Choice Broadband for Monson, that's funding that build out. And we do their,
Thank you.
We, we do their network planning and manage the construction of those projects. The, the ConnectMaine Authority, the former entity or the still, is still in effect, was hamstrung because while they had great intentions and they did what they could, they really didn't have significant funding, less than a million dollars a year to deploy. This last June, the $15 million bond bill that passed went to the ConnectMaine Authority. And that is what funded Harfords Point, Big Moose, Moosehead Junction, and the Wilson Lake area, as well as the expansion of Monson and a little bit down around Dover-Foxcroft. So, they've done a really good job with what they've had to work with. The Maine Connectivity Authority has been, will have $125 million from the ARPA Fund Act to start deploying beginning of next year. They're still in the process of organizing themselves, hiring staff, developing their grant programs. And that is the entity that the Infrastructure Act dollars will ultimately funnel into as well. So, it's really, it's a function of the amount of funding available as to what the difference will be between the old ConnectMaine Authority and the new Maine Connectivity Authority. So, we're optimistic. The important thing is that in order to secure those funds, they are expecting local matches, county match, service provider match before, they want those funds committed before the ConnectMaine Authority or the Maine Connectivity Authority will award funds. So, this process and the data that we're creating is going to enable Piscataquis County and all of the towns to participate in those, those competitive grant rounds. We know that in order to either extend the cable TV infrastructure or deploy fiber to the home, will amount to about $600 million for Maine in order to accomplish that, either through grant dollars, low-interest loans, or service provider investment. And all of these areas are uneconomic to serve without subsidy. If it was economic, the service providers would have already built in. So, these, this federal funding that's becoming available is designed to stimulate those investments and to turn uneconomic investments into something that will create a return for the service providers.
Excellent, thanks, appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, John, as well. We'll keep this conversation going here.
Okay.
Excited, excited to see this back on the agenda for the county.
Great, all right. Well, whenever you make your decision, just let me know. I appreciate your, your help and thanks for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Is there any initial public comment?
I would like to hear.
No, you go ahead.
I would like to hear why Tyler was still sitting on the board.
I'm a duly elected member of this board.
And you also violated my civil rights at that meeting by shutting me down. That's a, that's a violation of my First Amendment rights. And doing it as a town official under the color of law, which I was hoping that Eric and Sue would read up on this stuff and have the town attorney here to explain this. But Eric, explain to me because you were looking at Robert's Rules of Order.
I'm just saying that.
And that is how we, so there you go again. Don't interrupt me. That's what got you in trouble the first time.
I had that time, that would be it.
So, have you, last time I talked to you, you told me you were looking at it.
Yeah, we, we don't necessarily have to follow Robert's Rules of Order, but we have a rules supporter. And so, the public, the, I think the situation was the agenda item that we were talking about. But I, I think, you know, we, it's understanding the rules of order of the meeting. And I think we need, you know, we could talk about that.
Well, why don't you explain to me what you did to me? Let's start with that.
Sorry, I'm gonna just clarify here that the purpose of public comment is for the public to comment. It is not necessarily to have a discussion on a specific topic.
I understand that.
And the board members are not obligated to respond in any certain way. So, this is your chance, Mr. Witham, to share what you would like to share and we will listen in time.
No, I need a different venue. I understand that a public comment, you're not gonna answer my questions. I'm trying to figure out how I do get you to answer my questions. I'm trying to figure out how to make a complaint because so far, it seems the only one that can do this is Brian Turner. Nobody else can get a complaint to the table.
Have you filed a complaint?
Three, to be exact.
Written complaints?
I, I've, I don't know. Tell me the process. Explain to me the process for a complaint, A to Z.
What would you like to complain about?
Well, you're not, number one, you're not gonna answer me because this is a public comment. You just said that. But if somebody makes a complaint, how do you do it?
I would recommend you.
Not, not me, anybody.
I would recommend that you communicate with the town manager and he will bring that forward to the board if necessary.
That didn't work.
Have you filed a written complaint?
I called the town manager. I told Selutman Eric Garmio at the same time. I reported the complaint to him. Nobody ever got back to me. It's never been on the agenda yet, and it's about the signs. Richard Ellard has complaints that never seem to see the light of day. But somehow, Brian Turner made a complaint and it went from A to Z, I came to UConn and guilty, without the accused ever being able to speak once. Explain the procedure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you've misunderstood the process by which code enforcement occurs, but you have been informed in writing on multiple occasions of your alleged violation. And you have been afforded the opportunity to respond according to the rules of the town.
I was not allowed to respond.
That may be your opinion, but that's not a factual statement. With regard to complaints that you have about town activities, I would recommend that you write them down and submit them to the town so that we all have a written record of what your, what is on your.
They are written down in the public comments and in the minutes. It's all right here.
I would recommend you file a complaint with the town if you have a complaint with the town.
I'm, I'm filing a complaint with you right now.
I would recommend you file a written complaint.
Why is he still sitting here after civil rights violation?
Mr. Witham, I'm the chairman of this meeting and I'm the moderator of this meeting. So, I'll ask again, do you have any public comment?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Witham. Is there anybody else that's a public comment? Sorry, I'll just.
Just to add a procedural point as to, so the Select Board is not the Board of Appeals. So, when somebody has a violation that's been, that they have been served by the court officer, the proper place to do it would be to the Board of Appeals. And that was all written down in the letter.
Yes, exactly, thanks. Any additional public comment?
Either. It seems like you guys hate anonymous complaints seriously. But when you get somebody standing in front of you, you're never serious. You just sweep it on another rug. And that's what I've seen every time I've come in here. Nobody's gotten back to me about my complaint.
What's your complaint?
Jesus.
The culvert?
You just need to go home, is what you.
You saw the video of Brian Turner.
You just need to go home because you're not doing this town any good. If you want people to act respectful toward you, you just need to go home, that's it.
This is what we're all talking about. We can't get a complaint anywhere near you, guy.
Mr. Witham, you've had your opportunity. You said you have a thing to say. Thank you.
How can you go in the town office? When I did come in here to speak to him, he automatically turned it around on me. I was the bad guy. Brian Turner is a public official. He works for this town. He needs to act accordingly and he didn't. His job was to come in there, do his job. When he escalated, doesn't matter what I have to say. He knows, knows his job. He should have backed out of that driveway, called the cops, had them come in on that property with him. That was his job, but no, did he do that? No, he didn't. Continued to argue with me and not even own the property. Don't you see something wrong there? He's gonna argue with somebody who doesn't even own the property? That's the good old boy system around here. You keep letting it go.
Thank you, Mr. Ellard. Is there any additional public comment?
I'd just like to say that I would agree with, with Richard.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
No, I'm not done. You, you recognize me to speak again, so I'm gonna speak. What Richard is saying is the problem all of us have. I made three complaints. I made a complaint about a sign and I did it before the sign even went out. And nobody ever got back to me. Eric knows about this because I called him at the same time. And he told me that Brian Turner said there was no property line, which was a lie. That's what started all of this. But Brian Turner somehow can make a complaint and it flies right through, no problem. I have a complaint about Tyler Atkins.
Mr. Witham, unfortunately, I'm not going to let you misrepresent the actions of town officials in various capacities. You have your opinion. I regret to inform you, you have either little or incorrect information. So, I'll take your note. Now that we have this camera in our meeting, everything is recorded so we can see exactly what people are saying, et cetera. You will be in the record. Thank you. Mr. Boston, do you have a comment?
Yeah, now I'm trying to think of what I was supposed to say because I'm just. So, there's a, there's been a couple of things here that, I think it was Sue that you said at the only first meeting, transparency, right? That's what we were looking for.
Communication.
What does that mean? That's honest, right? Isn't that what the definition of transparency?
I think it was more communication, not information.
Because I just don't see. I just don't see. I don't know, there's so many things that, go back and talk about the road again. I don't know where we're at there. It's really, none of my answers, my questions got answered. Is it just? I don't know where we're at. Are we done with it? The road work? Is everything done?
Sorry, I'm having trouble understanding your question. Is it about the summer projects?
No, the road work that, you know, the ditching, paving, all that. Is that completed? Is that, is it done?
Well, there, I think there were some follow-up items, right? So, where are we at with those?
Chad, this afternoon, he's gonna be going next week to fix, yeah, to fix some stuff on the Willamette Road and, you know, check. He and I both are gonna go out to the, the, and then, it wasn't for Chad's work, but some of, some of the, because of all the rain that we got, some of the dams that we put in on the Combs Street Hill, tried to like go up and around. So, we've been taking out of those dams and making the water go faster. It's better for Combs Street, but because there was just more coming than we thought would come.
I wanna talk more about that later.
Yeah, and we also have on the agenda tonight to talk about potential additional community input units.
A lot of the things, it's just the same old thing. It's like, I don't know, look at everything that Lima's done. They put trees in, everything beautiful, everything was good. But how come we can't have like a flag so that looking? Somebody already asked this question. I think it was somebody from the duty education committee. Plus, I keep having a flag in front of Mike's place. Where's that? It's missing. Some, I don't know why.
Probably.
But it's like, it's just little things like that, you know?
Negativity at the time.
Somebody asked, it was about the brush being cut. So, when you're coming off the Willamette Road, and I definitely agree with that, you can't see when the cars are coming down from North Guilford. And I'm wondering if it even got passed on, that information, you know? It's like, it's like, in the past, when things like that, when somebody in the public asked for something done, it was done. Didn't wait for, you know, months, you know? I just hate to keep complaining. But not a public comment to them. So, I guess I'm done. I'm on that. Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you.
Just for the record, it wasn't passed on because that's how it became second. That day after it was out and it happened out.
I didn't hear that. It was second, it was out.
But your point is taken.
Yeah, that culvert is just gonna have to be ripped out, as simple as that. I mean, if you look up it, the big snake going right up in it, you know, stuff's gonna collect in there. You can't even look straight through it. So, whatever they did is like, so unprofessional. You know, you did smother, rip it out, do it right. There's gonna be problems with it down the road. I mean, it's washing out even more. The only thing that's saving it is a piece of slate. Slate's bouncing the water off. Everything else is bouncing over, it's getting deeper. If that little piece of slate wasn't there, that'd be all washed out by now.
Which one is that?
35 St. Louis Road. I mean, if you had somebody just look up that culvert, it looks like a snake going right up in there. And that's just gonna collect dirt and everything. And if the water's not gonna go through there properly. You were right the first time. It'd be better to hire somebody who knows what they're doing, pay a little extra money, but not all the money that we wasted and do it correctly first time. We're afraid of doing that stuff.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so the next topic on the agenda is the town manager report.
So, the tax payments are starting to come in even more now as of Tuesday, but I just saw a big stack of checks today. We got collected over half of the taxes, so that's fairly good for this time of year. Just so, it's in the record and it really is reminded, the discount period ends next Thursday, by the 30th, but we do take, like a postmark. So, if you mail, if you mail by the 30th, then you still get that 2% off. Roadwork stuff, he and I talked about making sure we did in the seasonal stuff, like the dogs and the folks and all that over the next couple of weeks. I don't think, but we may, we may be more swimming in the late, October, maybe so I do. The extra yield sign for the New York Capoeira is, has arrived. Plan was to get it up by, by tomorrow, but I think it may be out the 11th next week. We have, we have to order the post for it.
So, you have, I'm sorry, where is that gonna go?
So, because of the, because of the traffic lanes, I guess, if will, you can't have the idea that I was thinking there to talk to you of just the one that we have now, that, I can't redo that because that would be crossing a lane of traffic. So, it's, so that one that we, that, so that one that we've been working, the uncomfortable stay, and then there'll be one that's just a little bit before.
A warning sign.
A warning, but it's, it's just another yield sign. It's not like, you know, yield ahead or anything.
Yield ahead.
Well, I think it's better to stop people. I, I was walking and I saw two Mack trucks just be going through it. So, if, if, I think, even if they stop a lot of them, then that's a success.
It's kind of weird. So, if you come and if you go and I turn left there, that is a stop sign, right?
Yeah.
So, why wouldn't it be a stop sign on the other side as well?
Because you're kind of going with the traffic.
But whose, whose decision is that?
I can ask the traffic engineer.
Curious because that would be another, just making that stop.
Yeah.
Just allow that traffic down.
The visible stop sign.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you also, something, a couple things aren't on the agenda. You talked last meeting about a flashing sign.
Of course.
Yep. Some of the things that I worked on when I wasn't here, so today I started to look at, so I should pass something by next week.
And I was just, it wasn't a flashing sign, just to clarify. It wasn't like a flashing sign that we have on the triangle.
No, right.
It was like with the LEDs that go around the sign, just to get people to slow down as they come down that hill before they're in it.
Yep. We talked about it already, but I spoke to Chad Davis, who's gonna take care of any concerns that we have for the roads. And that's at no cost. Like I said, yeah, but just... Just kidding. And then also, we are... I don't know what happened with the mirrors for Heeman Street. I ordered it from someone company. I got, I found an email saying that they were back ordered, so I just canceled it and reordered from a different company. You can always hear them on the radio, Road Ranger, let's see if you guys will... And they guaranteed it to be here by the twenty-eighth, so by next week.
How are they gonna get mounted?
On the side. So when you pull up, they'll be right there, and then they should be able to see you around.
On the same side of the street.
Yeah. That goes the same for the, for by Combe Street, too. So we've spent a little bit of money. I know that some other towns have spent a little bit of money on the communication infrastructure for EMS services. But the county commissioners have recently talked about at their meeting with, and they brought it up through the sheriff's office. That their estimate is we still need about five million dollars more to, to like... Upgrade, or to, not upgrade, to like modernize. So I believe, unless I'm wrong, that they want to consider some blocking. Or which the county, that might currently have me involved with. So we don't have any numbers, considering not for fire or transportation. But for the transportation, I met on Tuesday with Allstate about the fence, because that's what happened. Apparently, Allstate was working with Alan Farquhar, who's the company I run, to give us the quote. And Alan Farquhar has since come back and said that it's too dangerous of a job, so they won't do it. There is a company that will do it, but they can't do it until this spring, or, yeah, actually, I think it was a summer, it was June. So as, 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 like, as a go-between, or if it works, Allstate is going to bring in some... There is a barrier to put along, just so there's something there.
What about Brian's comment, taking out that pole and just... Hold there more.
I'm looking for that. I did that, could do that for probably less than whatever it costs.
And then we would put in that big dirty barrier.
Yeah.
I'll worry about it.
No, thanks. I appreciate it, everybody.
You still have to have the fence, though.
Oh, yeah. I was just saying, it's short-term. Especially this winter, because that corner's a slider.
You should be dragging that bicycle down there.
Just running in there, it's like, you're like gossip.
Yeah, you gotta go down before two fifty-nine.
Okay, I'll, I can talk to...
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Actually, no, I gotta talk, because that's one thing I just found out about all the flags recently. I did not know it, but CMP does not own our poles. Every single one of them is owned by consolidated communication. So all these years, you know, we've had to talk things that are wrong, and they never said anything about it. Because I called them the other day, we knew, had Sandra come in about the flag. Okay, yeah, so that's the fence. Before, I just returned from shooting the first installment with thirty-four thousand. Just as a reminder, we're getting sixty-nine thousand. I did receive an email, Allstate, from Bill Barney, from Premium Choice, about the fiber lines. The estimated completion date is March thirty, March twenty-second of next year. They don't know if it's how firm that is, that's just their estimate. And that is like sixteen months away, which is what they had told us earlier. I believe at last meeting, we talked about getting an update on what the county's plan is for... Their recovery money? You think I don't know what's happening, anyway? The county doesn't have a plan yet, so essentially what the town manager and I talked about was that they gave money to the broadband... Rest thing that John had a couple of... Other than that, they don't really have anything second stone. There's a few small items here and there that they might use money to try to take care of, but they're nothing registered, so... It's kind of crazy, because the county actually got like sixty-nine dollars, so it's not a small little change. I have not heard back from Acton yet about the Wi-Fi system, but I did, I don't know what you wanna call it, escalate it to the next level. I, I involved Mark Collette, who's the president of Acton, to see if that can rally anything. I also did send an email to Bob Keys, the local guy, and said that, you know, at this point, the ideas that he has aren't that expensive. So let's start to work on stuff, so that we can, so that we can get it to work better. I'll call it good.
Alright, and... Select board report there. Am I going first? We've got a long list.
Okay. I'm always free for now. So I was cruising other select board towns, select board websites and such. And I, and just the teacher in me, just thinking in terms of citizen communication. And I hear ya. And what we can do to improve that. And eventually brought to my attention that... We don't always know, as citizens, how this whole government, municipal government piece works. In terms of select board town meetings and such. I think we're more familiar with town meetings, maybe. But just how everyone participates in the select board meetings. And some towns have what they call rule of order, rules of order. And it's geared to let folks, you know, citizens know, you know, how to participate, what we do as a select board. In terms of referring to the, our legal obligations, but also how we have to proceed via those legal guidelines. If that makes sense. And, you know, what are executive sessions, you know? What's the legal, you know, guidelines on executive sessions, all that? So I just want to propose, maybe an idea is that we could come up with our own rules of order. We don't have to reinvent, you know, the wheel on that, because there's a lot out there already. We could have a pamphlet or something that would be helpful as people come in, and they could see. And it would explain a lot about how we operate here. And just, it's unlearning in the process, too. But like I said, the teacher in me, it's just like, how can we improve the communication? And that would help, that you knew what our guidelines are that we have to operate by. I think that might be helpful for all of us. That was one. My question.
Sorry, just on that topic. So it's like a resource for converting kind of the legal stuff into practical and then filling us in with blanks for what we have discretion around.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, you know, how the public can participate, and what our guidelines are that we have to follow. What our legal parameters are, within language terms, yeah. And I can share with a couple of towns that has really simple ones that I thought might be helpful. I can share those with you. My other question was, I need this question, Daniel, but, yeah, communication, right? Do you, we know where the status of our new website? That is, yeah?
No. Well, we do embed the, 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 the community grant group that's been working on everything. So the idea was, once we get past the busy season, the, the, the marketing for the town, which is at our site, it is part of. Will be the next, like, project. So I just continue to hope that it's off.
I know, it's frustrating.
You ready to talk?
No, hold on, I...
Hold in the breath?
Hold in the breath today.
On Monday, I had a lady call me that lives on the lake there. And what she'd been used to doing is taking drinking water from the outside path of the town office. And she told me that she was told just recently that, you know, she could not do it because of liability issues. And anyway, so I checked around with you. I checked around with Buddy, because it happens sometime for Daniel. And it sounded like it was either Brad or Lucas's, you know, that... And the thing that I got was, there was two, I talked to Sue, the lawyer, too, and I talked to Jim Greenlee. They used two references. MMA either said it, we couldn't do it because of liability or the issues, or our home insurance company. So I don't know if that's true. Yeah, I just wonder, that's only one person that's inquired about that. So should we go ahead and check into it, to see if there is any liability, just to recheck? Or was this just a case where, again, too, I guess there was another complication in it. Like you said, I wasn't around, but somebody was filling three or four fifty-five gallon drums, you know? And...
Is it the Spring Road, it's just...
We were calling, we as a town, so the water that's above it is not, it is tested and actually regulated by those, but it's not a town's, like, regulation. I did check what the insurance company did with our adjuster, or not adjuster, or whatever they're called. And they said like that their position hasn't changed. They don't advise towns, they don't own the water district, so just a lot of people. To, to a...
Is it our water, or is it led's water?
The source is...
And it's tested twice a year, but the way I understood it, too, was that that issue was more around identifying the... Whatever you wanna call it, that the faucet outdoors was clean and not being used for numerous purposes. That could cause it to get... I'm Santa Cruz, you know? Anyway, but some of the people on the lake, of course, they draw water from the lake for their other purposes, cooking, whatnot. Yeah, but, you know, it's like somebody said to me, it just makes a little bit of sense, some sense that they pay significant taxes on the shore. Maybe it's their problem that they live there, but it's just a point of view, and I just think that if it's worthwhile looking into. And it's not that the liability issue, anything to the town. Check into it.
On a related note, I do think that, like, up at the Spring, on Spring Road, I would be interested to know, like, what we would need to do to be comfortable having that be a public source of water. Because it does get used. Reality is, it's quite a popular resource, and I think it's a... It's a thing for us to have. But if we're going to have it, then we should make sure that it checks out the boxes.
When people ask about groundwater, that's usually what we say is, that it just wanted to get used, that there is a spring in the water. We're not telling you, you use it, but there is a spring in the water, and even during off season, you're still just a problem.
The next item in my head, that I got, some questions about the work specifications. You know, Rick asked me about it, for the bid for the road work that we had done this summer. And, you know, reading from it, I don't know if that was, that put out for everybody to see at the time. It seemed like everybody had it.
You know.
You know?
It was just to...
Yeah.
Like the actual bids that were...
Well, I don't know if that was the actual bid, but I guess...
Popular, yeah, that's what Chad, that's what we negotiated down to.
Yeah. But, you know, I did look at it, and I just said, well, it's kind of basic, very basic, as far as instructions. If I can read them off? Okay. The road will be posted as closed to avoid needed need for flyers. That's number one. Number two, the road will be shut down while changing colors. That's number two. Number three, this rip wrap will be used where needed for erosion control. Extremely steep slopes. That's three. And then, that's basically it, for getting detail to the road, making, you know, building itself like ditches and cowparks and stuff like that. I know that if you went by what the state has, you'd probably be looking at something that's about four or five pages. You know, as far as the ditching, the slope, the rip wrap, if you need to have erosion control, whether it's hay, whether it's that blanket that you lay down in the ditches and stuff like that. That, those three sentences. And well, that one, one sentence, really, number three, is the only thing it talks about, anything about erosion control. So it's pretty basic. But then I wanted to go on, too. When you talk about the Elixir Road, there was no comment in the Elixir Road about taking down the berm that goes along the length of the road that's causing erosion. There's nothing here. And there is a little bit on, like, as far as Pleasant Street doesn't really say what, but... What annoyed me today, and I talked about it, was I went up Pleasant Street to the point where it's gravel, and then you take a hard smoke down and a slightly turns toward the lake. And they put some rock dams in that slope of water. And of course, that, that then eroding, in addition to holding the water back and creating some other problems. So the town is in the process now of rip wrapping that entire ditch at cost. So what bothers me is we already paid a significant amount. And we're gonna pay on top of that, the same, same work, to rip wrap that ditch. And I just don't think we ought to be doing that. We shouldn't be paying for it. That should be something that Chad should cover. For proper work. In addition to that, if we continue down the road, and it's the two telephone poles that are up from the... They call them a hundred mile campsite there, two telephones that hold back. On the north side of the road, not the south side of the road, where new ditching was done. And you come to the very end of the new ditching, there's about a eighteen inch culvert, I'd say. But that entrance to that culvert, and it looked as though that culvert, I wish I had a better light, but the other end is obstructed by debris on the lake side. But that model is completely bent over, better than halfway, goes down. That bothers me as well, too, just knowing... And that bothers me as well too, just knowing that one would come and ditch that whole length of the road. When they come to that culvert, they didn't look and see the condition of that culvert and at least attempt to open it up. So it's just, uh, you know, a lot of things pertained to it. I didn't go down there simply to either see any of those items. I went down there to look at a culvert replacement that was in the middle of those two holes. To see if whether or not that culvert was maybe sized correctly. And it's hard to tell right now, but it's it's a spring run on culvert and I wasn't gonna try to second guess something. Really didn't show what the channel. So that, you know, things like that, I think we have to take into consideration with what we take for money and see if we can get those things fixed for that cost. I know that going down the uh. Well, that road on Monson Hill, we don't want to bring a big excavator in on who. Hot dog, it's just, yeah. Well, that's gonna be hard, but. That tool from two weeks ago.
Let's go back to that. So just in terms of why I didn't have Chad pay for this, for the Pleasant Street stuff? Well, I can't speak to the culvert that's created or.
Just an old culvert.
Yeah, um, we didn't, we didn't, um, I don't think he changed any cost, no concern, but.
It was one.
Okay. Um, I didn't have Chad fix that because I didn't think it was really, like, you know, we found a ring. So I feel, and when I, and when I spoke to people, that the dams that that were put in, they, that like, that, it should have worked and they, and they were working. The problem was we've done so much rain lately that the water was backing up beyond them and it was going up.
Out on the road.
Yeah, out on the road, two or around, so.
The dams are too high. The height of the water was exceeding the dam, and they're already long to the road.
Right. So rather than. Have Chad, we just decided just to rip wrap this, just to keep it. And it 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 does need to be slowed down. And again, from from my opinion, it didn't, I mean, that wasn't Chad's fault.
I I don't remember all the, all the details of that conversation when we were talking about the revised scope. But I, but I do remember it being a shortened proposal, but that there's a basic understanding that the work that was going to be done would be done to standard practices. And that we wouldn't need to to micromanage every single specification of that because what it was going to be done. So I mean, that's where a lot of this frustration comes from with work that now is is clearly either not finished or done incorrectly. It is the assumption that it should have been done right first.
You know, and a lot of this too is during that drive out of that summer, of this summer, you didn't see anything about whack because they hadn't gotten any rain. You would have got another three days of rain coming out supposedly. So we're probably down to see more.
Yeah.
Well, not on nine eleven there, and I know you were sick and you probably haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about manning the town flag. But Matt, the lawyer, helped me on nine eleven to blow the flag out mass and we did our veteran salute and all that good stuff. And the next day I came up and placed it again. Um.
You did you did.
Yeah. No thanks. Uh. The other thing I think we should do too is, this is on ATVs, new TVs that are using the main access here. Need to put a trail end somewhere nearby, wherever we can, with permission from probably the landlord, which is probably Libra. That trail ends right here by the quarry. Going up fifteen. Now, they have the right to go fifteen hundred feet to go to Robinson's.
Yep.
But I think that fifteen hundred feet would be shortened quite a bit so that people don't go down points and go down Route fifteen. So if that sign is there, you know what I mean? Uh, I'm not against ATVs, I'm just, I'm like, people travel where they should be traveling. So you mentioned that we are looking at getting the speed bump to slow down the traffic. And Sue mentioned something about a sign to on self may. Okay. So we're probably not gonna do that this year because it's always kind of.
And I can't find, it's a long story.
It's the same. We still find Sue's sign, okay?
Right, yeah.
Sue's sign.
Sue's, Sue's sign, Sue's sign. Uh. Uh. Are we looking for the options for the town block? Or or do we need one? Somebody brought that up to me and I said, that's a good one. Do we need one nowadays?
This whole thing started because it wasn't working for Greg. How long has it not working for? Years, probably.
Must be five, six, maybe even ten years. Do we need one? I, why don't we, like I said last week, how about a sundial, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing started because it was assumed to be an easy fix, right? Maybe it was a battery or broken gear or something, and then a year and a half later, here we are.
Yeah, I just.
What, he doesn't know what's left now?
Yeah, I just. I mean, everybody's got a phone now, everybody's got a watch like mine, you know? Do we need a? I might have you. No, okay, that's. You know, like, do we think of.
Can we put it in the historical society for, you know, for the museum or something?
Yeah.
It is technically like the Monson, like, ten year block. Cause that's what it says.
Everyone's seventy, but.
No, it said, no, it said, do you buy some vegetables?
I haven't had to buy some vegetables.
No, no, the country.
Think they'd make something nicer.
But yeah. We'll put a, we'll put a nice piece of. Side.
Uh. So anyway, I just, uh. Do you know what, how much that rework is gonna cost us as far as the Pleasant Street?
Um. The the only cost we have in good is to, is our loads like many, and so that's about eighty bucks an hour. Um. The rock's out. Under chat. So Chad, did, did you help?
So eighty, time to leave, remember? Maybe you're questioning this time.
I always bring up the point there, and I know I nobody can quantify it, but. When you're doing stuff like that with the town people and town equipment, I know that the excavators have problems, I guess. But you're losing opportunities to get other work done that should have been done. But, right. You know, Steve or whoever could read that much or could do them whatever. That's all I have.
How long, how long ago was that work done?
It's been less than, uh, probably three, three months.
Two. Is that part of the contract that? So now we're hiring someone else to fix it?
I'm saying rework.
Backcharge your original?
Remake.
We get backcharged your original people?
That's what I'm asking for.
That's what I like to know. We're not gonna pay twice. This work's gotta be guaranteed for at least a year. If he can't do it, hire someone that can backcharge it, go for it.
Yep, that's my point too.
And I agree, we'll stay on top now. Um, on the, on the topic of the flashing light out here, so that was gonna get brought in and tried to get fixed. When you go again, Dan?
We can do it a segment, but we do the yield, so I'll be.
Our next topic is.
I didn't say the water, right? They, 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 they complained draft didn't ready, so we went to start to schedule. I'll probably have two meetings in October. There'll probably be the opposite weeks of the these second meetings for the public to see the, the draft and to offer. If you get, if they want to add anything.
Oh, comprehensive plan, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, first is the festival committee.
It's just, just two people, right?
Yeah.
Bobby.
Oh, no, that's not Bobby.
She's down.
Oh, yeah, no, she's not here. Um, okay, by chance, Daniel?
Um, kids are moving forward, the items are just sort of ready to be ordered, start to sell. So there'll be some T-shirts, there'll be some ball caps, bandanas. Um, and. Not beer steins, but beer mugs and wine glasses as well. And those will be around town to purchase, but people will also be able to purchase them online as well. And that's, will go directly to, to by somebody in effort for, for that, for that year.
Sandra, did she want to add anymore?
That's what she told me to say.
Oh, okay. We can unmute you if you need. She's just not.
Um, okay, mute station, please.
Um. Sandra, do you want me to go ahead or do you want to? Oh, we gotta unmute you. Can you do that? Can you unmute yourself?
I unmuted me. You can go ahead and report.
You do it so well.
Make the report, Sue, you do it.
Well, we we met this week, it was just Sandra and myself. Um, and we, we went through and, uh, looked at the the upcoming projects. Um, Sandra, could you add in something if I missed something here? Um, we then took a, a survey of all the, um. Utility poles in town the other day. Um, because we would like to have a flag on every single utility pole. Um, and so we gave that information to Daniel. Daniel, I was, I was kind of doing some tech here when we were talking about the CMP poles.
Yep.
Was, what did you say about those?
Uh, CMP, they're all owned by, they're all owned, they are all owned by consolidated.
Consolidated. So do we have to go through again in order to?
That's.
Fasten it up?
Well, I don't think we have to put them on, I think we just have to get it there, like, you know, with the rubber stamp.
Okay.
So I called their office and they sent me to an engineer who has a, who who helps to get answering probably.
Okay, okay, but that's our plan is to have flags on, on every pole. Um.
The, the, the last thing, anybody knew the rule was they can be on every other pole. I don't know why we're bad.
Sorry, the work is this time. And then we just need to get the. And Sandra, I'm not looking at my spreadsheet right now because I'm using my laptop for this. Is there anything else that I missed?
Not that I can recall, that was the, we went over the, the general plan. I think you got it, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. The first topic in the whole business is early bio of the solar panels. Um. People, yeah, that was on, that's on my plate, so I'll give a laugh to a future meeting and listen to what they think say on this thing. Uh, next topic is select board.
So anybody should have a copy of this? I don't know how you like to hear it, if you want to go down line by line, or if you just want to talk about it, or. Yeah. Is there any preference?
Okay. Do you know that beautifully our calendar turned, yeah, can I see your first comments for that? It was email.
I can't.
I like to see it. Uh, I did find it in another town. And it's in a little bit different format, it came from Thompson. I don't know. It's just. Rather than something I get off to my lawyer, like, uh, Daniel wasn't sure that it'd be right. And I said, well, maybe it's better for me to just, uh, understand what some requests are. But my only point is that duties of the selectmen pretty much mirror what's in this format as written. And, uh, but there's some other portions of it that pertain to the town manager that I think are very pertinent. That should be in, in that as well too. I think it should be part of, uh, you know. This is more toward that goal of the public understanding how the town government works in this particular format, like the adoption.
Yeah.
So it gives basically the executive body, the legislative body, and the administrative role of the town manager. I might preference is to have this, but not versus the one that we have, where I think it came from originally, except for that portion, I think, to the town manager. And I don't have a lot of comments, I really only have one portion or one form in the way that, uh. Gets, uh, proposed for us to read through the sign. And, uh. It is one of the last comments in the section of, uh. It's been number three, a member of the select board in relation to all board members should. And it's refrain from communicating, communicate. Even for the purposes of research. With outside entities. Unless the whole board has previously agreed on both the position and containing the position of the entire board by the individual member. I do not actually understand.
Yeah.
But in, in context to, everything else matches up in detail. But I know this was probably put in because I do, if I don't know something. I spend a lot of time checking the communicated, getting information, stuff like that, just on my own knowledge as well as to the benefit of the taxpayers in town. Uh. To check to see that what we are doing, what we, uh, put on our budget numbers and stuff like that. Based on a town of the same size, the same structure, same open court, same size fire department, everything kind of lines up financially. And that's the reason why I've got a lot of that in the past. And, uh. I can find that.
So do you know where that one came from?
That was number six in my, in the new one that I have. Where a member of the select board in his or her relation to all board members should. And this one has been changed from refrain from communicating, says refrain from communicating the position of the board of selectmen to anyone unless the whole board has previously agreed on both the position and the language of statement containing the position. That's still an awful word, whatever it is, right?
Yeah, you can't speak for the select board. Yeah. Unless you want to.
Yeah.
That's basically what you said about that.
So I guess my, my point here is, I think to think that we can't do research. Especially when we're, especially, usually most of my research has been in budget, the budgeting process. And that is nothing that. And that is nothing that, uh, is going to affect of both of any sort. It's not going to affect any positions, especially just coming with information. But hopefully gives us more ideas, better information as to how other towns might be operating and paying for different areas of whatever department they're running, you know, that's a similar size, similar people and all that. I just think that's almost like, gee, it's better off, Eric, for you just to sit there and not be recognized at all if you don't contribute, you know? And I'm gonna contribute.
We're just reading again here that is, sorry, so this this one, three E, right, that's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So three, Daniel, was three, three E, was that changed to add the?
The only thing I had is from the one that I use, it's like the not use this one.
Maybe you can land right out.
It doesn't take a standard one. The only thing I had was for purposes of 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 research.
Right, so but that changes materially what this clause says.
Right. I can explain why and where it came from.
Sure.
The reason, just because it's not to, it's not to hold anybody back from being a good thing. I, as I was thinking about, you know, research and information that has been provided, I think sometimes they still, like, you know, they necessarily always know the right questions, like, say, like, you know, if the formal sort of call MMA or something. And and they're like, they're legal, I mean, not, not we should ever do that. We would get forward to this.
They're not gonna give you all these people now. They're only gonna give you one, right? Like most of the time.
Right, so just like, so the idea was to, for the research part, was to narrow it down so that the professional person, whoever it is, the town manager was, you know, who knows the right question to ask, was the one that I was asking you the questions. And, you know, there are, like, say, like, in the five years, like, when, you know, that, when that away of of what 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 numbers was, like, you know, was corrected. It's very hard to to say that those are apples to apples because they're not at all. But it was presented like, you know, this is apples to apples. Does that make more sense? It's not to hold anybody back because obviously.
Anything can be discussed.
Anybody can research or do whatever. The idea is just that, and me also, because all the all the town, all the town managers, we do talk every time, so it's a little, I won't say embarrassing, that's not the right word, but it's a feeling when I get calls or I see another town manager and they and they have a lot of questions about why a selectman from my town is, I have, you know, that's why I see all the time. That's where, that, 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 that's where it came from.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that you would want more outside support, not not to limit the lines of communication, but.
Um, you know, I can understand what you're saying, but the period of time it's always been during that budget process. Those numbers aren't finding because it takes the entire, well, it's the town manager, it takes the entire select board, and takes the entire budget to basically listen to that and decide whether or not that's fruitful information whatsoever, you know, but, um, but on the other hand, you know, I don't think we're doing justice to the citizens if we don't do a lot of research on some of this stuff. And that's really the only point that I had, I can be not questioning some of the other ones, but I I understand, you know, you know, as far as disagreements and stuff like that, you have to agree with the rest of the board, you know. Majority votes is just like anything else in the world nowadays, you know.
So I mean, yeah, like, if we want to take out that part that says for permission of research, if that makes a agreement, yeah, but that's one of the parts.
I mean, so, yeah, still, you're already wrong.
I think that it's true, it's very nebulous phrase in there, because I'm just thinking, um, outside entities for myself, is that being online, you know, search other towns, um, information. And to.
Well, I, my intention was, so the intention was just to not, was to say like that one select person should be in vain.
Right.
An opinion of that.
Right.
Unless it's been, unless it's been the way they voted.
But that's, that's actually what that says without the.
Right, so that's why you did it, you did it, and then it goes back to. Yeah, is that?
You know, and it's a good idea, I mean, that everybody do their research in some way. Another way to do that is just ask for their annual report. And that I have done too as well, but sometimes I ask around specifics around the annual report because their format may be different than our format.
Yep.
Yeah. But you learn a lot, we probably don't have as much as I did, because somebody.
So it sounds, it sounds like if you were happy with this, absent that clause, or?
Yeah, absent that clause, yeah. I think the most of the other ones are really all maybe cross it a little bit sometimes, but I often draw it, give the other. Oh, yeah, no, I have another one here, too. Going back to number two, another of the select board in relation to the town manager should.
What page is this one?
Uh, I don't have the page number.
Six.
Number two.
It says section two?
Yeah, section two. A group of select board in relation to the town manager should, um.
Wait, are you looking at, were you sharing that one?
No, no, Daniel's.
Under duties of the.
Yeah. And the system refused to act on complaints. Now, I know that this is the same exact one that, uh, has, which is what came from Thompson. But, uh, depend, act, if it means act and actually take take on any issues on complaints and try to, uh, make change without, if it's an administrative duty to the town manager, no. But I'm just wondering, does it mean more than act, does it mean investigate? And can can a selectman, if they receive a complaint, investigate that complaint? I'm just asking. Does that, does act mean beyond act, does it mean investigate? Because I investigate a lot of complaints. And I have to actually see it from my own eyes to believe it. Before I even bring it up to you, you or people. But is that mean, how how does that mean? Is it just, and my intention is not to act on anything. But my intention is to follow up with a pointer. Just want to make sure that these are all, they're not, make sure that this is screwed at a later point.
Right. I interpret it as that, as that, you know, you would, that this selectman would listen to the complaint, take it all in, but then not act until the whole board.
No, and that's fine.
But you have a good point.
Eric, there's a point that wanted to give us, is it reference?
Yeah, it is. I didn't mind it, I I actually found this fifteen minutes before I left the house and I actually checked off things that all lined up. And I didn't really go through a lot of time. It's, I think it's pretty short, it's pretty much the same word.
Okay, maybe I missed that.
Oh, wait, um, is it, on the top of the seventh page, we recognize and support the Mr. Chain of Man and refuse to act on complaints.
Yeah, I guess that's one, yeah, yes, that's it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, probably is true. Well, that means, yeah, within the chain of man, it's something that the administrative role of the manager was to handle it, but that if that is, you know, from the previous discussion, if you have any complaints, I mean, first, that's the town manager's thing. If there's no results, then you bring it up to the whole board and give them just notification of what's going on.
Yeah, I think the last one that's in this one is.
Yeah.
In the top one?
Yeah, yeah, in the, in the new one, yeah.
I always like to state the more positive, like what we should be doing, rather than refusing the negative of refuse to. Uh, do we really complaints? Was our role in that?
Yes. And then, of course, uh, one of the first ones there, uh, in in our section B, understand that each select board member, no, no, sorry, the first one, actually, A. Understand that the basic function of the select board is to make policy with administration delegated to the manager. I do like this one that's here because it really mentions that up above were the board of selectmen. That it deals with the, uh, policy administration, but, uh, the the ultimate administrative responsibility is to see that governmental policies are carried out, and this is basically the select board. But must deal administratively through the town manager. And then the selectmen appoints and supervises the town manager. So it isn't so really just a, um, policy, um, making, like, the responsibility. We also appoint and we supervise the town manager on all of his activities, just like you brought up to me who me back there when I said one of his titles is road commissioner. And, uh, when we were talking about the road, and you said, well, that's our responsibility to follow up on that, you know, to oversee, to oversee, to supervise, you know? So that was, and I, when I saw that, I said, yeah, that's a good point, that should be in there, you know? Not just our basic function is to make policy.
Right.
Should be also to supervise, and then to appoint and to supervise the town manager.
Was this, was this on their website as their bylaw, as their bylaws?
No, this is just, uh, it's sort of like I was telling Sue there, this is sort of giving the the people an idea of what each does, you know, the town manager, but it all, it covers everything, pretty much of what you have here.
Yep, I want to say, because this sounds more like what Sue was talking about than a bylaw.
Yeah, so anyway.
Well, a little bit, I was also, you know, the the different piece that would be separate from bylaws is just the rule order.
Yeah.
How we just, this would be the.
Yeah, it's on this, have you used the C P three six two website before? There's a lot of like government policies somewhere in there, yeah.
Well, I thought that's where it came from because actually some of the dates matched up with some of the the first puppy from us there had all kind of little, oh, select board bylaws, you probably September two thousand sixteen. I think I was seeing seeing some of that, yet not there.
No, I took it from heaven, I thought.
Yeah, so anyway, apparently there's a lot of this, it's pretty much.
Pretty standard, yeah, I know that MMA has a, has a board, I believe.
Well, but everything before that, and understand our positions and our roles and stuff like that, I don't know. It's just, uh, being able to function so that you're giving citizens who liked it you as much bank for their dollar that they could do what they expected you, you know?
Does it, does it make sense to share either notes or or to come in and update this stuff based on that really back? And we can have a nice meeting?
Sure. I was just doing that on the electronic.
Okay.
I could email that to all of us, just so I I know that we got my data ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Were there any, any gold light of the kind of concern you or?
Um, I think my two cents is just that I I like having another point of reference here, so I'll take a second look at both of these and shoot you an email if there's any additional.
So again, we're we're looking at, on on Eric's copy, the top of page two B, we're looking at like that.
Yeah.
To replace our, okay, you have it there. And then under six, the ten down.
For purposes of research.
For purposes of research, right, okay.
Because this is good tool in the beginning, I mean, this could be shared with everybody, too, because it goes into executive section, how you carry out the executive section and stuff like that. That's all boiling point.
It's meant to be a public document that would live on our website?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else on this topic?
Nope, all right, we'll move to the next of general assistance mechanisms. Uh, we had tabled it for, I don't know. They was asked what the last few maximums were, so I have those. Other than that, two approved, because it's one of on the thirtieth of September. This is the old, if anybody wants, that's what we had tabled for. To prepare it last, yeah. No, I did, I tried to help people, I can make copies of two together. Should be on. It's one of the counties, sorry, that's not me, um, it's one of the individual counties on that page, yeah.
Oh, there we go, oh.
Overall, that's really this. Six, seven, no? There we go.
It's down?
It's down, yes.
Down?
Down fifty bucks, that's good, that means that we ain't coming up to the.
No, six fifty nine versus this year's six sixty five, and seven, seven fifteen, eight eighty three, eleven fifty, ah, sorry, eleven seven two, and then fourteen twelve. That's just the. Or sorry, that's the apartment, so. Have the AC and C.
Wait, wait, uh. So, is that a four dollar increase?
It's, yeah, the low, the lowest, or the one person is. Um, six dollars, and the five is, uh, sixteen dollars. Um, so what am I moving to approve the state?
Yep.
General systems guidelines?
You're maximums.
Yes, I've moved to approve the plan twenty twenty one. General systems overall maxims. Oh, sorry, I meant twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three. Twenty, that seems like who's in the best. New business road committee discussion.
I don't have anything, it's, or that, I don't have anything officially, but when I figured after, after I put on the agenda, we could talk about it. And like, in terms of what we want for the road committee, and then I can write up the committee charge. Based on that, and then we can approve it at the next meeting.
So, just the, the idea here was to, now that we have cleaned up a number of items, there's obviously still lots of work to be done, but, um. To form some sort of committee to include more people from the community in the, uh. In the maintenance and oversight and decision making of how we continue to maintain and invest in our infrastructure. Um, and to do so through, through, I mean, this was just the idea, this is a point for discussion, what's the right, uh, medium to do this, whether it's a formal committee or a working group or. Stakeholder group, et cetera, but I just wanted to kick off this conversation today. Um, for how we might do that, and what types of people we, uh, or skill sets that we would like to include in that, uh, body, et cetera. Uh, so this should be, I'm imagining this as a, as a resource for both, you know, on the ground oversight, seeing what's going on. Rapid response for things like washouts and preventative maintenance, um, and as we look ahead to. About prioritizing which, uh, what type of work gets done in a given year or, or a year or two ahead of time. In addition to updating the, the road plan moving forward, so kind of, uh. Everything from, from today to very much down the line, uh, input on how we ensure that our roads are well maintained and represented. A good and long term investment for the community. So I just wanted to plant that flag for today, so, um, Sue or Eric, anything about this?
I don't know.
No, no, but I like the idea of having some people with a good background in, uh, you know, road building. Albert's, uh, pretty much people who are seasoned, so that they know, you know, when the timing is, do this work of the road. Brush control and stuff like that, you know, that's what we need, uh. It seems like.
I'm gonna have to see, I have to.
Yeah, you play behind the eight ball on a lot of things, and I think it, it's a matter of. Almost like the dog chasing a stale, and we're just not getting anywhere, but we're just. We're talking about the same stuff all over again, I think we'd have better luck if we got some people with some experience. And I think the town monster, oh, God, just have to look for some volunteers.
Well, it's a reasonable number of, of folks on the.
I was like, four or? You check on some other towns as well?
Yeah, I think it depends on how. Their purpose, if they're a committee, maybe. Like, they have authority, you don't want to ignore it, because that's a even number. Um, well, I, yeah. But yeah, I can check on some other towns, see what they have. And, um. I think that in terms of like, to make up on it. I did want to move it around at some other towns, and it does seem like, you know, there should be maybe. You know, say, three numbers from the public, and then the town manager would be, and then. The execution of that member, you know, and there are, sometimes I have the town manager, but also a member of the select board too. Where it doesn't bother. Be like doing stuff, people, so. I can, I can go with the value.
I think in the past, we had a select person. I think we had Brian, I think Rick was in public works at the time. Um, like, yeah, like, it's a, it's a, he's an all around experienced person. Now, who else was in that group? Alan Millia, Alan, yeah. But anyway, it probably, you know, Julie must have been the one who received the input, right? Was it Julie who received the input?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But she was involved.
Yeah, so, I guess, he, he never happened.
Yeah, it was in Julie's time.
Oh, Julie's always answered my questions, I can try that again. I guess not, really, but I think she should be. Um, in terms of like, when I'm writing, so I, I can come to the next meeting with the draft, or if we want to come to the next meeting with. Ideas, so if we're gonna come to, if you're gonna have, if you want me to come to move with the draft next time, then I'll need. A little more confirmation, in terms of like, authority, not authority, but like, what level and the number of people. But if we're just gonna have a number of discussions, that actually brings some ideas.
I think it's, I don't think it's time, right? We just kicked this off now, come up with the draft, we'll also do some research, since we're allowed to do research, and, uh, and we'll have. You know, to fill in some of these places.
I'm wondering if there was, um, some structure written historically for the previous road commission?
Well, Rick said he thought he had something one time, but it's all that. What's that? No, I didn't, I didn't catch that. The, the previous structure and some of the information that you came up with back in those days, uh, timelines and what your plans were. Never found any of that? All that history is gone?
Probably, I don't have.
How good September is, uh.
Um, actually, there may be some, yeah, I can look, same way downstairs, too. Um, one thing not to leave, that was, you talked about last time, I have the, 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 yeah, that.
I forgot about that, I forgot that. This was just, that is the wrong title, a wrong, wrong version of the, right? Should I write one sentence?
Uh, yeah, I think that's right.
Uh, so I move that we approve this debatement recommendation from the assessors' page dated September ninth. Twenty twenty four, map and lot twenty four thirty seven, dash zero zero, dash zero zero. All right, with that, I move that we adjourn. Let's do it in seconds.
All right, thank you, everyone, I'm remote, it's a real person.